Okay, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the city, Bellflower City Council to order Monday, February 28th, 2022 at 5:30 PM for closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Santainas.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, you got a lot of reading on those closed session items.
Four items tonight, sir. We have, first is a threat to public services and facilities. This is a consultation with Lieutenant Juan Bruseno, who is the acting captain at Lakewood Sheriff's Station. The second item is conference real property negotiator. The property is 16824 Bellflower Boulevard. Negotiators are myself for the city and Martin Howard from Gardening at Night LLC as the potential buyer. The second item is, or third item is conference real property negotiator. Property is 10510 Landre Avenue and 10525 Tribuco Street. Negotiators are myself and Juan Flores of Technico TV. Last item is conference real property negotiator. Property is APN 7161-013-901. It's a city-owned property. Myself, negotiators myself and Vanessa Delgado with Azure Development.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any conflicts for any of the closed session items?
I've got a conflict, Mr. Mayor, on 3C. No, that's Mr. Hamada. No, I'm, a conflict 3C. That I have property near that property.
Okay, anybody else? Not seeing any. Let the record show that Councilmember Coops has a conflict with 3C. He'll be recusing himself for that item. All right, let's go to closed session. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the city, Bellflower City Council, Monday, February 28th at 7:02 PM for open session, and we're reconvening to open session. And there was no reportable action, and we're closed. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Santainas.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here.
All right, I want to have the invocation led by Councilmember Raymond Hamada and the pledge of allegiance by Elizabeth Corpus, planning, director of the planning department.
Can I all stand?
Stand.
Let's see, dear Father, again, thank you for the time given to us to conduct business of our community. And, Father, we thank you for the gift of community and the many blessings that have come along during our times, during our town's journey. We pray that each person that is a part of our thriving community be given the care and direction for success. We pray for those that serve and protect our community and country, and that they be given your hedge of protection. We now pray for peace in the world and that sincere diplomatic relations shall take precedence because human lives must be saved and shared. Father, we seek your wisdom and guidance as we lead your place called Bellflower and that it will continue to experience progress and the best things yet to come. In the name of your son's precious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements. The LA County Health Department issued a new health order that went into effect last Friday, February 25th, which creates elective criteria for establishments, businesses, and venues to voluntary implement to exempt either of the following from indoor masking requirement. Option one, all fully vaccinated customers, visitors, and onsite workers. Or option two, just fully vaccinated customers and visitors. For more information, visit publichealth.lacounty.gov. Mayor Protem Santainas.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fair Housing Foundation is hosting a virtual fair housing workshop on March 10th from 1:30 PM to 3:00 PM. This workshop is free and open to the public. Attendees will learn about fair housing laws, rights and responsibilities for tenants and landlords, and how to deal with tenant and landlord disputes. The Fair Housing Foundation will explain state and federal fair housing laws, discuss state and federally protected classes, notices, security deposit, rent increases, how COVID-19 has impacted housing, including moratoriums, COVID-19 protections, and much more. For more information and to register for this workshop, please visit www.fhfc.org. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. To help support local business owners, the city of Bellflower is highlighting local businesses in the monthly East Citizen newsletter by sharing businesses' updates, special events, holiday celebrations, and more. Additionally, to show support for new businesses in the city, business owners can request a free ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate their grand opening and meet the Bellflower community. For more information on the city of Bellflower business resources, please contact the Economic Development Department at 562-804-1424, extension 2010. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Bellflower previously launched www.bellflower.com. That was a digital gift program to benefit both local businesses and customers. This program is still available through the end of March 2022. Bellflower merchants can register for free at www.bellflower.com. For questions regarding this program, please contact our Economic Development Department. You can find them at 562-804-1424, extension 2249. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Volunteer Center works closely with community groups, churches, service clubs, schools, organizations, and residents to provide spring baskets for our students in need. Partnering with Carrying Connections through the Bellflower Unified School District, the Volunteer Center takes referrals from case managers who work directly with these families in need. If you'd like to be a part of this important program to donate items for a spring basket, please contact the Volunteer Center located at Sims Park at 562-804-1424, and that'd be extension 2331, or by email at mnavarro@bellflower.org. Please note that all donations must be received by March 16th of 2022. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Stewart, public comments.
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item then must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
All right, do we have any public comments?
If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the more button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments.
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
All right. Item 11, public hearings, we have none. Item 12, ordinances and resolutions for consideration, we have none. Consideration item 13A.
This is our consideration possible action to provide staff direction hosting the 2022 Bravo Awards in relation to the COVID-19 logistical challenges. Mr. Milano has been working on this for some time, has a staff report for the city council.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, I'm here to provide a report on the challenges with the 2022 Bravo event implementation and to provide you with potential alternatives moving forward. At the conclusion of my update, staff is seeking direction from the city council specifically on the feasibility of hosting the event on an alternate date, and if so, on which of the optional dates that will be recommended. You'll recall that due to COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic, the 2021 Bravo event was canceled with the hopes of bringing the event back strong in April of 2022. Staff was prepared to do so, but as the event was entering the most critical planning phases, the pandemic surged with the Omicron variant in January 2022. This particular surge essentially brought the event production to a standstill, requiring the event to be canceled in April and to be considered for a potential date later in the year. Considering the busy event schedule the city already has and the required planning and logistics that goes into the Bravo event, staff is proposing the following alternative dates for the event: either Thursday, July 28th, Thursday, August 11th, or Thursday, August 25th. It is important to understand that if the city council chooses to host the Bravo Awards rather than cancel altogether in 2022, challenges will remain with resetting and implementing a compressed planning timeline that will run simultaneously with the summer event schedule. Additionally, staff continues to navigate LA County's reopening protocols in our ongoing efforts to reopen Parks and Recreation facilities for use and offer extensive programming as we emerge from the pandemic. With those words of caution, staff is prepared to reset and adapt plans as needed for a scaled-back and modified event with the following recommendations. Staff is recommending that if the event is offered in 2022, the city eliminate sponsorships entirely for this year only. This would eliminate the awkwardness and difficulty of having to reduce sponsorships amounts and perks temporarily and then raising them back to their normal level in 2023. We also want to be sensitive to the fact that many of the sponsors the Bravo event relies on for funding are also still recovering financially from the pandemic. Staff has prepared two format options and locations for consideration if the city council wants to move forward with a 2022 event. Option one would be an award ceremony only onstage at City Hall in the Civic Auditorium with a guest speaker and a free lunch afterwards. This option would only be available for the August dates at the auditorium. Option number two would be a luncheon and award ceremony at the main event center with a guest speaker. This option would charge a fee and would closely resemble the state of the city, which the city will be hosting on October 6th, 2022. The recommendation now to city council is for you to consider the proposed 2022 Bravo alternative dates, the feasibility of hosting the event, and provide direction to staff moving forward. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, PJ Milena. Milano. Any questions of my colleagues to PJ?
I do, yes. PJ, are you, have enough staff to even do an event like this? I know you were hurting for people.
We do. A lot of this, the day-of staff, we can make that happen. The biggest stress on the planning is with our full-time staff, and we're fully staffed with full-time. You know, it is going to be a strain if we're doing it during the summer because we are increasing our hours. So it will be a challenge, but we will make it work. This event wouldn't kill us staff-wise.
I do like what you said about not have participation by the previous suppliers because of, you know, we don't know what their financial capabilities are, and we're not sure what the cost will be for the funding of the speaker. I mean, there's a lot of things, moving parts on that.
Right, and with the compressed schedule, we also would be going back to the well within, within just a few months for the next Bravo as well. So we think if we do do it, that that's the most responsible thing to do for, you know, the limitations we'll be under.
I'll be honest with you. I'm just gonna say it. I think if we just forego the Bravo of this year, we're all gonna be better off. Otherwise, we're just gonna have a makeshift deal that we're not gonna be, it won't be near the caliber of things we had previously. And we got our plate pretty full with the summer program already. And I don't know what it's gonna be like to sit outside here in August and try to host a luncheon. It may be so warm that you don't want to be out there. And if we go to the main event center, that's an expensive proposition. And if we're gonna try to sell tickets to it, that's also a challenge. But my gut feeling is let it go. But anyway, anybody else can put in their two cents.
Anybody else want to chime in?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. PJ, based on the issue, I think the biggest issue in postponing this Bravo Awards is the lack of speakers. So can you talk more about that? Given the possible rescheduling to July and August timeframe, have you tested the water, if there's any kind of decent or good speaker that can, that is, that will be available on those dates?
No, we don't. We started testing the waters in December, January, and there was very limited notable speakers available. And any, they were only doing virtual at that time. We are still in the pandemic, and I know there's been a couple of comments about LA County's opening up, and there's a new health order. But LA County still is the most restrictive county in the nation as far as COVID restrictions. So I don't know when they're gonna open up. So the speaker, I would anticipate, and I don't want us to have very large expectations if we do it this summer for a speaker. We will get a speaker, but I, it's a big variable right now, especially as we're still coming out of the pandemic.
Well, that's a concern to me because we don't want to, just to get a speaker. We want a speaker that can draw some audience into this big event because as far as I'm concerned personally, this is the biggest event for the city of Bellflower. So I want to make sure that we do it right. So the other question I have is, let me clarify on option one, that will be, that will be free, right? Including the lunch?
Yes, option one would be free. It would basically be what we've had it be in the past without the sponsor reception and without the essay contest winner. But it would be free. There would be a luncheon out there.
And you anticipate that's gonna be limited seating somehow?
It would be, the option one, the outdoor venue, it would be the same as we've had it in the past, outdoor seating. It was mentioned by Councilmember Coops, and we've discussed this as a staff as well. That option may, it may be worrisome in August as far as the heat goes if we're doing a luncheon outside at City Hall.
Okay, but indoors, do you envision it to be similar to what we use in the past in terms of using the Civic Auditorium? Although with some, anticipating there's gonna be some kind of limited seating?
Yes, so if we do the indoors at the auditorium, there, the limit, I don't think we have a capacity on limit right now, other than our capacity limit, which is 300. But as far as COVID restrictions, I think that's what you're asking, limit capacity. I don't think there's major capacity limits due to COVID. Where the restrictions are gonna come in and where I'm still concerned about is if they don't drop all of the masks. So currently, the mask mandate in the news is stating that the mask mandate has gone away, but it hasn't. It's only if we're checking vaccination status and have verified that, which we don't have the capability to do as the city. So I'm hoping that goes away very soon. But that's the only limitation I see at the auditorium or even at the main right now, is the masking. But I don't think there's any capacity limits at the moment. Our events would not qualify as any of the mega event.
Okay, and next question is, in the past, what was the timeframe we were able to get nominations? Because I was counting the, from today's date until, let's say, the earliest option for indoor is, option one is August 11th. That's about five months, right? So would that be kind of reasonably sufficient time for junior staff to publicize, gather, evaluate, and then process these nominations?
It would be compressed. We would definitely work closely with public safety to, they would need to, we would need to double down our efforts as a city to try to get those nominations done. But the timeframe, as far as that goes, we would still have time with these dates to make that happen. We were very limited, and I think it was a lot to do with the pandemic of being able to recruit and advertise more. But we are definitely gonna need to, we got zero nominations this first time around. So we would, we would need to double our efforts. Public safety is a huge part of that, and their ability to organize the selection committee and then be able to get some nominations for it. But there is time. I'm not gonna say there's not. But it, that was one of the challenges we dealt with due to the Omicron variant.
Okay, and one more question. Because in the past, we have partnered with Mayfair High School and Bellflower High School, and they were able to give us the winners of their essay contest. So given that the event's gonna be in July or August, school is out. So how do you envision student participation if we do it this time around?
For this particular event, that would not be part of it. So that would be one of the scaled-back pieces.
Okay, all right. Okay, very good. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that said, I've been thinking about this myself a lot, and I think we ought to forego it this year. On the note, what Mayor Protem Sunny Santainas was saying is, if it's not a quality event, we shouldn't do it. We spend a lot of time, this is a top-notch event, and when we invite first timers to these previous events, those attendees that have never been are wowed by what we do. And they, all the cities do some kind of honor recognition for what we do. And the feedback I got, and I'm sure my colleagues had it too, is that we're one of the best, top-notch ones. And PJ, this is within the summer hours. It's gonna overlap with street fests and the movie nights. Is that correct?
Yes, and I do want to mention one, you know, a couple of the comments we've made. But as far as the summer events this year, I do want to remind all of the city council that you approved a fireworks show for the last street fest. So it's not a Fourth of July fireworks show, but that'll be, I'm hoping will be our big comeback, coming out party for the city, coming out of COVID, will be the downtown fireworks show like we did for the 60th. So that's part of it. And then one other thing I do want to mention, just for consideration, is if we do decide to forego it, I would make a staff recommendation to roll over that funding that we won't use this year to next year so we can combine the two and go after an even bigger speaker.
Yeah, to come out. I'd never thought of that. I was gonna ask you to roll over the money into the street fests and movie nights. Or a bigger fireworks show. But we got time to talk about that. But that's my, I believe we should just forego it because we don't know, there's too many unknowns and a bit on a top-notch thing, and I think that would be the best decision. What do my colleagues think?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, it's disappointing to anticipate a second cancel, you know, cancellation of Bravo. But, you know, the COVID reality sets in, of course, and it's impacted a lot of the issues. And they've been raised, be it the nominations, the speaker, the sponsors, the school district, funding. Thank you, PJ, for bringing that forward about the, you know, carryover because that's what I was thinking. If we haven't been spending on it, then hopefully, you know, we can just make it even, you know, better than first class, you know, again in the future. Definitely sad to, you know, see that, you know, things definitely have been, again, truly impacted by COVID and it's not our fault and, or, you know, no one's. And let's, you know, let's just kind of be safe and also be, you know, practical because, yes, as has been mentioned, this is the premier event of any, you know, public safety-related recognition in the, I mean, to me, in the county. So it's unfortunate I would have to go along with, you know, again, bypassing it again this year also.
Okay, Victor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, you know, I think the timeframe of this event, I think everyone said it here. Our Parks and Rec staff do a really good job, and they're gonna have their hands tied with a lot of other events that are front-facing in the community that are exciting for all our youth and everything else. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to cancel the Bravo, 2022 Bravo and postpone it. I don't think you're seeking a motion to, at this time, to move the funding, or do you want to do that as well?
You can advance it to the next year.
You want me to, in my motion?
Either we can do that. I mean, what's, you know, are we gonna leave it up to staff's decision? Or you want to just say advance it to the following year?
If that's the will of the council, you certainly could make that motion and see if it goes. Put that on there, too.
What do you guys want to do? Roll it over?
I'll roll it over.
Roll it over to, the budget over to the following year to double it.
We'll second that.
Call roll, please. Motion by Councilmember Sanchez and a second by Councilmember Hamada.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santainas.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
Consent calendar, guys. Any recusal or conflicts?
I've got one that I'm conflicted out on, Mr. Mayor, and that would be 14I because I got property near that address.
14I would be Coops. Is that the only one I got?
Yep, the other ones I can stay in on.
Okay, entertain a motion for the balance of the, yes.
Can I pull 14E?
Oh, yeah, sure, of course you can.
Yep.
14E.
Just question and comment.
Anyones else, anybody else want to pull anything else or recuse? Okay, go ahead, head.
All right, yeah. Mr. Huckman, this is your report. First of all, I want to thank you for coming up with this, with a solution to this ongoing problem at the parking structure. You know, that we talked about this. I visit that structure very often. And I was really glad that you and the rest of the team was able to come up with a solution. I'm hoping and praying that this will be the solution. But having said that, if it doesn't work, I'm hoping that you guys will continue to work with other solutions to really combat this problem. So my first question is, when will this be effective? If we approve it tonight, when will the additional security be posted?
Well, we've got additional security working now under the current budget. We just foresee we're gonna run out of money because it's an extra service. And we're trying to get in there every night for about six hours, off and on in the downtown area, but mostly there. And it was Tej who came up with a good idea to put all that in Prop C funding so that, as we do with the maintenance, as I understand it. So that's why we're able to put out more patrol and not dip into the general fund.
Okay, and during this, outside of these hours, the surveillance, the presence of CSOs and deputy sheriffs will continue?
Correct.
I'm assuming, okay.
And that, I was at a recent meeting when it was even discussed that whenever deputies need to work on reports and that sort of thing, that's a good place for them to do that so they can provide some extra surveillance in the parking structure.
And finally, I just want to address the public because this has been an ongoing issue. I've been getting emails, phone calls about this problem. And let me assure our residents that we are addressing this issue. It's, it doesn't go unanswered. That's why I pointed out that this is a solution, and hopefully it's gonna work. And so I want to assure our residents that we are, we will continue to address this issue. If this doesn't work, then we will, we are coming up with other solutions to address this issue. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, who'd like to make a motion on the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops and a second by Mayor Protem Sunny Santainas with Dan accusing himself of 14I. Call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly for the record, there is supplemental material on 14G. Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santainas.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember reports. Mr. Hamada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly here, tomorrow morning, I'll be on the final two hours of the eight-hour sessions with the Swiss officials in regards to the Swiss Cal rail program. Hopefully, I'll wrap up before Councilmember Sanchez, I, and Mr. Seis get on a flight to Sacramento for Contract Cities. Just wanted to...
Just wanted to maybe do a little quick recap. Again, we've been inspired by the Swiss. Again, they have a great rail system, they have cooperation of all the organizations that are involved, but it's still going to be, it's still been tough to compare Switzerland with, you know, California, of course. And so we'll hopefully be taking some bits and pieces for implementation. And just one thing I, we did see at our last session was they also do, you know, car sharing. They have these little red subcompact cars that they share, like the scooters and the bicycles, and all those little red cars are all kind of scattered throughout the country, and they actually share them. So, I mean, that was interesting. But beyond that, for the rail, you know, it's still going to be a live and learn, and hopefully, you know, with adequate funding, you know, again, things will happen in California. Just want to take the opportunity to thank the Parks and Rec staff, PJ and his team for conducting the, you know, park input meetings. And again, I think we've been getting some good comments from some of the residents and for both Thompson and Constitution. So again, wanted to, again, thank staff on that, so, and that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinarily, I don't talk about my personal life or my business, but I have to mention that I closed my store today after operating on Alondra since 1979, so I've been in that location 43 years. I believe it to be the oldest continuous history store in the city of Bellflower. It was founded in 1931. I'm the third owner, and I've had it for the last 43 years. So we've had a good run there. I find that it's become more and more difficult to obtain product to sell. I've got a great business, book of business, I can sell everything I can get my hands on, and everyone seems to be worried about the restaurants not getting product or employees, but other merchants are suffering the same fate. So my wife and I, who have conducted this business all this time, have elected to close it down, and today was our last day. And I want to thank the city of Bellflower for supporting me all these years and made a difference in my life, allowed me to run for council, allowed for me to educate my children, and it was a fun run. But there's a beginning and there's an end to everything, and at 5 o'clock today, on the 28th of February in 2022, we called it quits. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
And we all wish you the best. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first off, I just want to follow Councilmember Hamada's and thank the Parks and Rec Department, PJ and company for a really good job on the community outreach meetings regarding the projects at Thompson Park and Constitution Park. So good job to them. And then I also want to just congratulate the new business and the G-Fit Kickboxing over at Alondra, sorry, Rosecrans, the old Kmart site right next door. And then lastly, just want to congratulate Dan on the 43 years of running a successful business here in the community, and definitely will miss the safe haven that the, your desk was there to just be able to sit there and chat for a little while, but I hear you're opening up another little location for that.
We'll still have that opportunity.
But with that, just congratulations, sir. That's a great accomplishment.
Thank you very much.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mayor Protem Santaines?
Thank you, Mayor. Two Saturdays ago, Councilmember Coops and I attended the opening of the Bellflower Little League. It's always nice to see the kids back again in action. It's been two years that they missed the baseball, and I think it's going to be a very successful league this time. They have over 300 participants, over 30 teams participating in the league. So I want to congratulate the Board of Directors led by Steve Baker, and I hope the kids will have a fun time playing baseball. And I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Sanchez's comment on the G-Fit Kickboxing. Again, I want to officially welcome Mike Gutierrez, his wife Sarah, and the manager, Roman, for picking Bellflower as their place of business. So if you want to check it out, it's located at the old Kmart building. And also, Dan, congratulations and thank you for your service. I think a lot of our residents benefited from your appliances. It's kind of sad that you're closing the doors, but I think you are on to bigger and better things, so.
I like to think so.
And I think that thing that I'll miss the most is the place to hang out. Especially those, watching those pencils on the wall.
Well, I'll give you a collection if you like it, though.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
And with that, Dan, I would like to wish you the best also, and I think you forgot to say that one of those phone numbers rings to the serviceman, so.
Yeah, if you want service, my serviceman Pete's been with me 35 years, call the store, his number will appear, and you can still conduct business doing service in the city of Bellflower. So I'm not owning that, that's a different entity, but you can still call the phone.
There we go. Hey, can't, just always think of everything. And with that, I don't have much to say other than it's sure is nice to start releasing or start cutting back on the mask guidelines, and we're getting back to normal. Hospitalizations are going down, as we can tell, and maybe we're going to have a bright future this summer with no pandemic or less of it. And with that, I would call for adjournment at 7:39, and we are adjourned to the regular next meeting of Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM on March 14, '22. Adjourned.